Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of St. Charles County Council. Today's date is March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. First item on the agenda is invocation, which will be delivered by Danny Lieberger, who's pastor of the Well United Methodist Church in Defiance. Following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Would you join me in a word of prayer? God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather, and we know that you created us to be creative people, but not just creative in the way that we pursue you, but the way that we serve our community and our culture and our context. And so, God, fill this room and these people that are serving you and serving their community. Just pray your Holy Spirit will be over them and help them be the best versions that they can be, the people they were created to be, that are full of love and grace and hope. Pray us in your name. Amen.
Do you want to just mention a little bit about your church? Because I know we can all, if you just remain standing for a minute, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, our church meets in Defiance, Missouri. So, we meet at Good News Brewing Company on Sunday mornings at ten a.m. New church that started in December, and it's been a lot of fun to see how people that have been disinterested in church or not plugged into church in our region and beyond across St. Charles County are plugging in. And our passion is for connecting people to good news and sometimes good beer and good pizza, since we needed the brewery as well. So, it's a good time.
Thanks. Welcome to St. Charles County. I hope your congregation continues to grow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you see, we'll do the roll call, please, Donna.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel. Councilmember Mike Ilum. Councilmember Nancy Schneider.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander. Councilmember John White.
Here.
Before we do the next item on the agenda, if anyone wishes to make a public comment, just to remind you that you need to come up and get a comment card from Donna. They're up here on the table, and the comments are limited to three minutes. Next item on the agenda is our county executive is going to give us his annual report. So, Steve Elman, welcome. Not that you're not here every time anyway, but.
Thank you, madam chairman. Members of the council, as you know, our charter requires that once a year that I make an official report. And I think you probably know most of the things that I'm going to be saying tonight, but there's people at home that hopefully are listening. And I'm going to try to tell them a little bit about what's gone on in the last year. Recovery, COVID- nineteen. Things are looking very good right now in terms of what's been going on in St. Charles County. But, you know, they looked pretty good last June, too. But I'm certainly hopeful that we're past this and we can move on. And I just want to take the opportunity to talk a little bit about what we've accomplished. The Public Health Department, of course, I think did a tremendous job providing vaccines to those who wanted it. And largest single day drive was forty-seven fifty-four. You can see the numbers there. Currently sixty, sixty-seven percent have initiated and sixty-one percent are fully vaccinated. Unfortunately, that's just a little bit behind St. Louis County, and I really hate to be number two. But it's been that way for a while, so I'm not sure it's going to change much. This is what I thought was really interesting. I mean, we all know how concerned we are. We were back in November, December of twenty. But when you look at the number of cases, last January was a lot worse. Now, it seems to me, you know, again, I don't know for sure, but it seems to me that the symptoms weren't as bad. And I'm not sure exactly how we did with regard to deaths. But back in January, it was really, there was a lot of people impacted. This is the numbers from March twenty to March twenty-two. And again, I gave you these last year after the one year. And this is an updated, this is kind of a two-year snapshot. And if you look, that first column there has St. Charles County, St. Louis County. We had about nineteen, nineteen thousand cases per one hundred thousand. As you can see, St. Louis County had more. The state was just a little bit behind us, or a little bit ahead of the state, but way behind St. Louis County. And when you look at deaths, where we were quite a bit behind St. Louis County, three twenty-one to two hundred and eighteen. So, I'm sure as more data is available, we may find out exactly why that happened. I really personally think a lot of it is because our people were healthier when this all started. Again, we look at hospitalizations. We don't have a two-year figure on this because the last year, we haven't been able to get good numbers from the other hospitals. But you can see the first year, we, we had our estimate, a population hospitalized was the lowest compared to Missouri, St. Louis County and city. And this year, I'm not sure how it compares. But if we took, we do know how many people were hospitalized in St. Charles County and we know, or from St. Charles County. And we know how many people are in the county versus the region. And we have about, we have about twenty-four percent. That's right. Twenty-four percent of the population of the region, and we have a little over twelve percent of the hospitalizations. So, our hospitalization rate is behind the region as a whole. And again, that's, that's good news. Again, this is just the vaccination rate, which we've already mentioned. And as you can see, we're, we're behind St. Louis County. But ahead of, ahead of the state and ahead of the city of St. Louis. Moving on to another issue, which we talked a lot about a few years ago, and that's the opioid crisis. And I don't think the opioid crisis went away. It's just we've been too busy worrying about pandemic. And we have, as you know, or we did almost three years ago now, I guess, hire a law firm to represent us. There's a nationwide settlement, and we will be getting nineteen point six million from that settlement over an eighteen-year period. So, that, that's the second most any county in the state is, is getting. And I think we hired a good law firm to represent us, and I think they did a good job. We, in the end, had to negotiate with the Attorney General as well. And I think he, I think he agreed to something that was fair to the state as a whole, as well as to St. Charles County. Again, four hundred and twenty-six opioid-related deaths. I'm not sure, but I'm not sure exactly how that compares to COVID deaths. But it's very expensive to taxpayers. Increased in the jail population and related cost to that, the overtime we've had to pay, the Narcan funding, nine eleven calls, just the increased cases in the prosecuting attorney's office. This is what we used to convince the Attorney General that we were entitled to this amount of money. Finally, we had a tornado on December the tenth, and everybody remembers that well. Major damage in the Defiance area, three injured, one fatally. Two hundred and forty structures. The estimated damages, three point four million. That's bad news if your house was part of it. But it's relatively minor compared to what other, some other places are looked, have experienced. And because of that, not that it's minor, but the number is minor, we didn't qualify for any emergency proclamation from the state or from the federal government. So, basically, the cost is, has been borne entirely by the county budget. And that's one of the reasons we have asked you to approve a decent reserve every year. There are some places that don't have a reserve, and in a situation like that, they would, they would have to take the money from somewhere else. But, again, there's not enough to meet the criteria for federal disaster. Money taken from reserve funds in the county budget is an example why we go ahead and do that reserve. Had a, I had a reporter ask me today about the various federal funding that we've gotten from the pandemic. And, you know, what did I think about it? And I, I said, well, you know, they didn't have a playbook either in Washington, D.C. But it was significantly different for the pandemic. They sent us money and then said, find a way to spend it. In the past, where we've had floods or if we've had tornadoes, it's just the opposite. They say, hey, you take care of it, and then we submit the bills and get reimbursed. It's easy to second guess, but that might have been a better way to do, to do the pandemic as well. And these are just all the people from that first night out there, and these are all the people that pitched in, got the job done. I praised them at the time. I need to thank them again. Our police department, our emergency management people, highway department, community development got out there and inspected. And the various other districts that aren't really associated with the county were out there and did a great job as well. Public safety, the auto theft task force, you're all familiar with this. Started when there was uptick in break-ins and thefts a year ago. And the chiefs have done a great job of getting together and putting this task force together. They've worked with a prosecuting attorney. And you had a hundred and one arrests by April first that year. Twenty-two eighty-two arrests by the task force by March first. St. Louis County, Maryland Heights PD have adopted the same operational plan here and, and will keep people from running back and forth between the two jurisdictions. This kind of gives you an idea, city by city. And you can see in two thousand and nineteen, it was three hundred and eighty-five, and then it jumped up to six thirty-two in two thousand and twenty. Went back down to five thirty-nine in two thousand and twenty-one. And things are looking good so far this year, but we'll have to wait and see. The auto theft prosecution, there's been two hundred and seven people caught tampering and arrested. There's been two twenty actually caught stealing motor vehicle. If you go and you look at the people in our jail, sixty, seventy percent of them in our jail for stealing our autos or out of autos, seventy percent of them are not from St. Charles County. So, these are largely people who are coming from outside the county. But of the ones we've caught, the prosecutor has, has either, God please, or has sentenced, ninety percent are either sentenced to serve time or they're still awaiting trial. And hopefully will be dealt with later. This is kind of the overall crime statistics. And again, if you look in the right-hand corner, you could see that we're down from two thousand and twenty to twenty-one in just about every category except murder and hate crimes, which we basically stayed the same. So, kudos to our police department and all the various municipal departments. They've certainly made a lot of progress from twenty to twenty-one. The body camera issue, of course, you know, we've talked about that for years. You approved it this year. Some information here on the cost. I think, I think this will protect our people. And I think it was a good decision by all of you to, to go ahead and make this investment. And we'll see, we'll see how it works in the future. Nine eleven, and I don't know how many you saw the article in the paper this morning about the city of St. Louis that's having such a problem with, with their dispatch. They were talking about, I forget what percent, we're under, under ten seconds, but it wasn't, it wasn't very good. We're at ninety-eight percent, basically, the last three years. Ninety percent of our calls are answered within ten seconds. The average time, the average call is in three point six seconds. And you can see there the number of calls, which went down in twenty and then back up in twenty-one. But then also the percentage of wireless calls, which has gone up slightly. Growth, we all are pretty familiar with the census numbers. More than half the nation's thirty-one, forty-three counties are equivalents, lost population. I didn't realize that. In Missouri, it's probably more than, more than half of the nation's counties. Housing, I mean, it's pretty amazing during the pandemic, we actually improved and built more. We're ahead of the pre-pandemic numbers for two thousand and nineteen, and what we have now rival the two thousand and twenty. Here, this gives you some idea, going back, what, eleven years, how in the last, what, five, six years, it's, it's gone up each year and hopefully will continue to at least stay the same or perhaps get better. Here's your total residential permits for each year. And you can see it went up and then stayed where it was. Construction costs, this is interesting. Eighty-five percent of construction is residential. Construction costs are outpacing inflation rate. I think everybody knows that, but it's amazing to what extent. A three thousand square foot home, increase in construction cost is about eighty-one thousand dollars more than two years ago.
That's crazy.
You know, we've, over the years, we've talked a lot about low-income housing, and we've talked, then we called it workforce housing. I think we need to start calling it housing for our kids. I think it's gotten to the point where, you know, young people right out of school, they get their first job, and, and they're just, it's going to be very tough for them to find that first home, unlike most of us. When I was that age, the problem was thirteen percent to borrow the money. Now, it's cost.
It's called Wentzville.
Steve, I don't think that hundred and fifty dollars a square foot is accurate for today's cost.
I'm hearing two hundred.
It's got to be two, three hundred dollars a square foot.
You think so?
At least two hundred.
Well, I'll have Mary double check it. We'll double check it and let you know. If you're right, I'll, I'll buy you lunch.
That's okay.
Our parks, of course, we're celebrating twenty-fifth year. We got a new logo. Forty-one fifty-one total acres. Park attendance down a little bit. Part of it is because Riverside Landing has some, like to call it Klingham or Park, I think. What's closed down. It's been closed down for construction, and I think that's part of the, part of the reason why that number's down. Because it was really up that first year of the pandemic, and that was good. Of course, we have our, our new park out in west of Wentzville. It's going to be a, I think it's going to be one of our nicest. We had the Keaven Brothers donate more than eleven acres. Thank you, Mr. Cronin, for setting that up. I think that's really going to help that Darden Greenway project, and we will continue to help them when we can. Pet adoption center, probably one of the most popular things that we do. And you can, you can see the numbers. Looks like we're, you know, we're going up in most categories. Here's a new innovative barn cat return to field program. And you can see there what they do. They, they trap feral cats and neuter them and then give them back to farmers. Transportation improvement plan, which you approved a few meetings ago. Nineteen projects within unincorporated areas of St. Charles County, fifty-two projects within the municipalities. A hundred and fifty million tip that was approved in December. Here's, again, here's where the projects are for the next three years. And I think they're, I think everybody has something that they can look forward to. The employment rate numbers, again. The big thing here is when you look at St. Charles compared to other places in the region, I think the fact that we were able to keep our businesses open to the extent we did is one of the reasons why our unemployment rate was lower. And it's quite a bit lower, as you can see, than St. Louis City and St. Louis County. And this is just the employment rate in our, in our cities. I'm not sure exactly why. There's a, there's a difference, but there's not much of a difference. You can see, again, that four of our five major cities are better off than Missouri and the national unemployment rate. As I said, we kept our businesses open. People from St. Louis County came out here to eat, recreate, shop, and everything else. And you can see, and I think I mentioned this maybe at our last meeting, that, that first year, our sales tax went up five percent. St. Louis County went down nine percent. The next year, St. Louis County, when city reopened, caught up. But if you look at the third column, that's the two-year difference. And they're basically flat over two years, and we're up, we're up fourteen percent. That's one of the reasons why we were able to give a seven point, seven percent raise this year. Unfortunately, that's probably going to be what the inflation rate's going to be. So, I'm not sure how much, how much good that's going to do. But here's the employee raises, and it's just a good, we're in a better situation than we were in two thousand and twenty. So, that's the good news and the bad news. And thank you for your attention. If any of you would like to use this to make presentations in your, in your district, obviously, it's available. And I want to thank Mary Anger and her crew for, for putting it together. Are there any questions?
Thanks for your report. I would say it was a challenging year, but a lot was accomplished. So, I think we're all very proud of, of what we've been through and where we're going, and things look good. So, thanks very much. Yeah. It's a team effort, for sure.
I told Rory that in the last two years, since he's been around, we have probably had more legal issues. And he's gained more experience being here in the last two years than he would, than he would have the previous ten. And it's been a real challenge. I know it's been a challenge for him, for everybody here, and for you all as well. So, like I said, maybe, maybe we, maybe we're all past it now.
So, collectively, knock on wood.
You know, though, when you go out in my district in the western part of the county, I mean, you look where it was a year ago or two years ago, we've got tremendous amount of growth.
Oh, no.
New businesses popping up and new retail and new subdivisions. I mean, it's not, it's not as bad as people, some people think it is. We're doing pretty well out there.
I think we're doing really well. And again, we're going to be spending quite a bit of money in your district next few years on roads, and that's where it's needed right now. For many years, there wasn't the need out there, that there were other places. And we got to, we got to fix the, the, the traffic problems out there on Seventy. And then I think I've said this before, but once we get that one fixed, we'll let Warren County worry about it after that.
Yeah. They, I had a meeting this past week with the mayor of Wentzville and the mayor of Forestale. We all got together to talk, and, and we know it's headed that way. And I think the road project is going to keep it, you know, keep the roads in, in the shape up there to that next wave of growth that St. Peters is, St. Charles, and then went to O'Fallon, and now we know it's headed that way. So, Forestale's getting ready to hold on because they know when Wentzville fills up, it's headed that way, too. So.
Well, there's a lot of people continue to come to St. Charles County right now. They're going out there. And they're, they're expecting us to provide the roads and, and provide the services and the schools to provide the education. And I think we've, the county's done a pretty good job of that lately, and we'll just need to continue to keep working at it.
I think we all want to congratulate our sheriff and police officers, too, for the great work they're doing. And we have a couple of them here representing their departments tonight. So, it's, it's really a wonderful thing to live in a community where we know they're working so hard to keep us safe and doing such a good job of it.
And even our president now realizes we can't defund the police.
Yeah, so he says. Okay. Thanks very much. I appreciate your being here. Okay. Are there any public comments or presentations? Public comments, Tony Bethman?
Is this our only speaker?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're not going to hold you to the three-minute rule here. So.
I'll be brief as I possibly can.
No, that's okay.
And I did my homework on this one, so.
Okay.
I'm not going to get off subject. This isn't a bunch of opinion-related stuff. So, real quick, my name is Tony Bethman from Tony's on Main Street. The reason I'm here is because thankfully, through a lot of hard work and investment, we have a business on Main Street that pays its bills to the city and the county, St. Charles City and County. The county road board costs, Tony's on Main funds the county road board to the tune of about twelve hundred bucks a month. It's about fourteen thousand a year that goes to the county road board from Tony's on Main, direct, boom, here's your check. So, this is real money, and the city pays, the city of St. Charles collects about five point five million a year from the county road board. And this project I'm talking about is seven million dollars in county road board funds going directly to the city of St. Charles. This isn't helping Wentzville or New Melli or O'Fallon or Lake St. Louis. This is seven million going straight to the city of St. Charles. So, that's more than one year's funding going to one project. So, here's the road board application that the city turned into the county. It was dated February of two thousand and twenty. So, this is when the Dow was eighteen thousand. This is when, you know, gas was buck fifty. And this is what city of St. Charles told the county road board to get this money in February of two thousand and twenty. Might have been April, but this is when it was dated. The city of St. Charles is in final negotiations with multiple tenants, including forty-seven million dollar, twelve-acre entertainment venue, expected to generate twenty million dollars in annual sales. Additionally, discussions are ongoing for a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand square foot office tenant and forty-five thousand square foot of high-end restaurants. Good for them. The city is also in discussion on a hotel user and high-end multifamily residential. That's what the city of St. Charles told the county to get this money in February of two thousand and twenty. They haven't been in front of the county road board since. They had one application two years ago, haven't been there since. The city was going to develop this property. That was what they told the county. On the application, identify all forms of public financing for which the applicant is applying or has been approved, including but not limited to special taxing districts, tax credits, state and, state and/or local tax abatements, and other public incentives. This is what the city's response was. Current funding for the project includes five million from Missouri governor's cost share, one million. 1 million state appropriations. Additionally, Corps of Engineer provided 1 million in funding for the hydraulic analysis. Additional applications are pending or forthcoming through the US DOT build, that was a $25 million grant to the federal government. It was in 2020, the same year. They were counting on that 25 million for this project. The federal government, in like 18 months, spent $9 trillion in stimulus. They give us 3-point-something trillion in bond purchases, another 5.8 trillion in direct stimulus. County Executive Elman just talked about that stimulus, and they didn't have $25 million for this project. Gee, I wonder why. So, list all. That's all they said. That's what the city had to say. And they had to do this to, this is what the city told the county in April of 2020. In order to meet the plan to start in April 2021, public improvements are beginning in February 2020. None of that happened. Their numbers, they came up with 28 million was what it was going to cost when gas was $1.50. I wonder what it's going to cost. This is only for 37 acres. This is a million dollar an acre in straight up, this, these aren't tax abatements, this isn't TIFs. This is straight up taxpayer money that's already been paid. 40 million is what they're talking about. This is only 37 acres. The city just bought the center 80, phase two. So what did the city do? So this was what Dan Borgmeyer said. We want to select who's on that property. This was in August of 2020, after they secured the money. Dan Borgmeyer said, we want to set the bar for that property where we want it, and at the same time, we don't want to cannibalize streets of St. Charles, which is one of our very successful developments. So that's why the city kind of decided to take a hand in it. So this isn't going to be a free market thing. This isn't capitalism. This is some good old St. Charles City Dan Borgmeyer socialism. He's going to decide who's getting all these tax breaks and all these subsidies. So now let's fast forward. November of '21, three months ago, four months ago, it finally went down. Okay? Something finally happened. The city didn't put anything up for bid. There were no RFPs, no request for proposals. All of a sudden, it came through a contract with Clayco across the river. Clayco was going to buy phase one and phase three, okay, for $12 million. Everybody's going to put the, the taxpayers are going to put 40 million into this project, and Clayco's only spending 12 million.
Excuse me, Mr. Bethman. I said I would give you some leeway, so maybe another couple minutes.
I'll wrap it up quick. I'll wrap it up. I promise. So listen to what the city agreed to with Clayco. And the city bought phase two, the 80 acres in the center, for $8 million at the same time. So the city owns another 80 acres. I don't know how they're going to develop that property, because I hope they're finally out of money. This is what the city agreed to with Clayco. Seller sold, including without limitation, this is what the seller agrees to, the city agrees to, approvals of development incentives, the creation of special taxing districts, i.e. community improvement district, transportation development district, neighborhood improvement district, the approval of a sales tax exempted exemption under chapter 100 of the Missouri's revised statutes, bond issuances, tax abatement, and tax credits in such form and amounts deemed necessary by purchaser, Clayco, in its sole discretion. The city has already agreed to give Clayco everything and above. The county can step in under chapter 13 of the county road board. They can step in. All I'm asking, please and thank you, bring the city up here in front of the county road board. Let's have a little public meeting. Let them put an outline of what is actually happening. There's another 6 million in prop P funds that's going to Chicken and Pickle that just came through last Tuesday. This thing is just blowing up like crazy. They're giving away the farm. Please, all, I just, please, let's have a meeting. Let's get Larry Dubrowski, Mike Klinghammer, Dan Borgmeyer in a room. What are you going to give these people? What does the final deal look like? Because we have no idea what it's going to look like. This is all just willy-nilly stuff that they're throwing together. I yield back the balance of my time, and I reserve the right to revise and extend my remarks. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions or comments?
He left his jacket. Mr. Bethman, you left your jacket.
Gotcha. Heard.
Well, I think.
Appreciate everything.
Yeah, Madam Chairman.
Yes. Yes, please.
Yeah, I think, I think he's right. We don't know everything about what this deal's going to look like, but we do know that because of our agreement with the city, there'll be no TIF. So none of the, none of the sales tax will be taken from the county or the school district or, or anybody else that benefits from sales tax. We also know that if they don't produce a certain number of quality jobs, John, do you remember what the number is?
140.
How many?
140.
140. If they do this and don't, and don't create the jobs, then we can pull the money back. Those are the two things I do know for sure.
140 jobs for 40 million is, man, that's, that's just not, that's not even worth talking about.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
$40 million for 140 jobs is ridiculous.
No, ours is 7 million for 140 jobs.
And the jobs.
And, and no.
But the total is 40 million in taxpayer funding. It's a million dollars an acre, and, and phase three isn't even businesses.
We, we do not have anything to do with the full project, just with that $7 million that we gave them.
If you know the kids are going to have a party, and they're drinking beer and smoking pot, and you say, well, I just bought the pizza, you're still complicit. I mean, come on, if we know all this is happening, somebody stick up for the taxpayers. Tony's on Main alone is spending $18,000 on this project. That's coming out of Tony's on Main's profit. They don't need all this money.
Thank you, sir.
They're billionaires. It's Clayco. Put it up for bid. Why can't we put it up for bid? It's not that hard.
Mr. Elman, do you have any additional oral report from the county executive?
No, ma'am.
Next, we'll take up the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
For a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Bills for introduction data, we'll start with bill 5049.
Bill number 5049, requested by John Lyons, sponsored by Nancy Schneider, an ordinance vacating a drainage easement on South Main Street.
There any discussion? I should know about this. I live on South Main Street.
Can we sell it to Clayco?
Okay. So hearing now discussion, we'll move on to bill number 5050.
Bill number 5050, requested by Michelle McBride, sponsored by Nancy Schneider, an ordinance amending the 2022 budget of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, approved by ordinance number 21-096 for the St. Charles County Collector of Revenue by removing one government services representative two position and adding one government services representative three position.
Is there anyone here from the county to speak about that? Yes.
Well, I was just trying to answer questions, basically. Right now, we've got a one government service rep two who waits a window eight hours a day. She's retiring May 6th, and we have enough trouble trying to hire window workers at busy season. She's been here 10 years. I don't think we're going to find somebody to tolerate that position for eight hours a day. My counterpart, the assessor, has all government service rep threes that go back and forth between their desk and windows, as does the recorder. So he thought this was the opportune time to make that adjustment, especially because there'll be no financial impact because of the long tenure of the GSR two. That salary is higher than the new salary of the incoming GSR three.
Someone have any questions or comments? That lady deserves a nice, long rest in a recliner. All right, thank you. Then the last bill for introduction is bill number 5051.
Bill number 5051, requested by Tracy Baines, sponsored by Nancy Schneider, an ordinance authorizing the non-binding projected tax rates of the county for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2022 in order to develop the notice of projected tax liability to accompany the assessor's notice of assessed value, all as mandated by Senate Bill 711, such tax rates being projected without increase from 2021.
Any discussion on this bill? Those are the bills for introduction. Are there any tabled bills to be removed from the table? Hearing non, we'll move on to any announcements or miscellaneous.
Don't forget, Thursday is the first annual St. Patrick's Day parade in downtown St. Charles, starting at the Foundry Arts Center.
I understand that might be your birthday, too.
Yeah, and I'll be at that parade with my grandchildren.
I guess you will. Gifts will be accepted, right?
That's right. There you go.
Any other announcements? Okay, then, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sex.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Quick meeting. Thanks for being here, everyone.